Hello, I'm Lydia Zapata, the moderator, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our community sponsors, I welcome the candidates and audience to this community candidate forum. The League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tahoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor Indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways we do this. Anyone 16 years or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information, go to our website, leagueofwomenvoters, it's www.tacoma pierce l w v dot org. That's www.tacoma pierce l w v dot org. The candidates tonight in ballot order for Puyallup City Council District Two, Position Two, are Joe Colombo, Dennis King, and Davida Haygood. This year's primary election is August 3rd. You should have received your ballot if you're a registered voter. If you're not yet registered, or you have moved, you may register at vote w a dot gov by July 26th. That's vote w a dot gov by July 26th. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in the ballot drop box by 8:00 PM on August 3rd. Any race with fewer than three candidates will not be on the primary ballot, as those candidates will automatically proceed to the general election on November 2nd. This forum is being recorded and will be posted on the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County website, which again is www.tacoma pierce l w v dot org. Questions have been prepared by members of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our cosponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text at 253-861-6824. That's 253-861-6824. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Terri Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will hold up cards to let the candidates know when they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when it is time to stop. When you see the stop card, you may finish a short sentence. I will stop you, though. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see me and the timekeeper, Terri Baker. Please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourself when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected. I ask each of you to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which, among other things, include addressing the issues and not making personal attacks. Please confirm by giving me the thumbs up. Thank you. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate for each candidate, and each candidate will be asked all the same questions. At the end, each candidate will make a one-minute closing statement. The order of the opening two-minute statements are ballot order. So we'll start with Joe Colombo, then Dennis King, and then Davida Haygood. So Joe Colombo, please.
Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to be here this evening. I am a longtime Puyallup resident, grew up on South Hill and graduated from Ballou, Junior High and Rogers High School. I believe that I am uniquely qualified and understand the issues here in Puyallup because I've been working nonstop for four years with a group I founded by the name of Indivisible Puyallup. I've also founded a group called Families for Puyallup Public Schools for people that are interested in discussing issues that are affecting our current school system. I have a unique background. I've been working in IT project management for many years, so I'm very skilled at helping taking a project from my idea phase into an implementation phase. I also have spent time in a former career as a credit counselor, so I believe I can use that to help keep the city fiscally responsible. Some of the things I'm really passionate about are neighborhood safety, resiliency, and connectivity. I believe that we have many areas of opportunity to work on our infrastructure within the city. I have a proposal that I created for an Equity and Ethics Commission, and I'm also very passionate about affordable housing and homelessness. I want to help and have some of those issues taken care of for some of our residents, and I also support economic vitality without negatively affecting our environment, such as making sure we have as few warehouses as possible on our current farmland. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next candidate, please, Dennis King.
Hi there, and thank you, guys, so much for having me. It's a true honor to be here tonight. Well, I've been in Puyallup my entire life. My family has been a part of the Puyallup fabric for over 50 years. I went to school here. My wife and I, we got married here. We chose to raise our two children here. I attended Puyallup High School as well. And I also serve on the Puyallup Quanis Club. I've also been a two-term president with that Quanis Club. Community service is such a big part of my family and what we believe in here in Puyallup. I've been a leader here for over 35 years. I understand what it takes to own a small business, and I focused continually on giving back to the community that supported us over these past 50 years. I want to see a city council that continues to focus on Puyallup-style collaboration and consensus building and not bring Seattle-style politics here in Puyallup. We must embrace our community that encourages safety and responsibility for all. And as a civil service commissioner, I fully support our police, fire, and EMS professionals. I, too, have a strategic plan to help homeless here in Puyallup and to end the cycle for homelessness. I also want community safety. I think it's important that we embrace our police department and all the things that bring us safety here in Puyallup. I want to bring affordable real estate as well. And by that, I want to be able to bring a vibrant downtown with additional housing. So with that, the future that I envision for our community and our youth is bright, and I want to see that by bringing unity and not the bureaucracies that could take hold of our city if we're not careful.
Thank you. Davida.
Hello, everyone. I'm Davida Haygood. And as a wife and a mother, I will say being here is a momentous occasion for me. I do not take it lightly as someone who has come from a lived experience where women who look like me or have lived experiences that I do oftentimes do not get a seat at the table. As a candidate, I deem my energy for leadership from leaders like Fannie Lou Hamer and Atwater, the Honorable Ruth Ginsburg, and Vice President Harrison, and the list goes on. As a candidate for Puyallup City Council District Two, I'm committed to ensuring leveling the playing field and amplifying voices in a system that fights to oppress and suppress women, LGBTQ community, and Black Indigenous people of color. I am the founder of Two Way Racial Healing Project and Puyallup United Against Fear. I also have served two terms as Board of Design Review and Historical Preservation Board. And as a leader, I understand the depth and breadth of how their oppression and suppression impacts all aspects of our city government. From areas such as city safety, rebuilding trust between residents and our local government, diversifying and strengthening our small business community, human rights and social justice, creating responsible and lasting affordable housing, renters' rights, especially coming out of the pandemic, and preserving the best of our community and building for a united future. The heart of our community rests in reconciliation, unity, and bringing all voices into the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Dennis King, you have agreed to the ground rules, which include not including campaign signs in your background, so could you please remove that?
Oh, I did not notice that. I will do that.
Thank you very much.
I thought you would have told me that beforehand, so I apologize.
Yeah.
I may lose you because it's connected to my screen, so that's the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, now we come to the questions. Each candidate has up to 90 seconds to answer each question. Again, the live audience can text questions to 253-861-6824. That's 253-861-6824. Okay. The candidate order will rotate with each question, so that for question one, we'll start with Dennis, then Davida, and then Joe. First question. How will you work to unite the city council to address equity, diversity, access, and inclusion in the city of Puyallup? And do you support the creation of a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission? Dennis?
Well, to kind of sum that up, it's kind of a loaded question. So I believe we should hold more district meetings on a more often and regular basis to bring the community together and voice their praises and concerns in our city. I couldn't tell you the last time that we've done that. I do know that one of our council members actually held a meeting at his own expense because right now you have to have the agreement of both council members within the district to hold an official district meeting. And so the city policy should be changed immediately. Community meetings should be a great way of welcoming all in our community to get more involved with our city leaders and not leave it to citizen comment times during council meetings. Transparency and inclusion should always be a goal of government, cultivating an environment and acceptance and appreciation of all individuals. If there is anything that's structural, that I believe that in the way of equity for all, we should strive to remove those barriers immediately. As I mentioned in a previous forum, I said that I would meet with the founder of the Two Way Healing Project, Racial Healing Project, with Davida if I were to be elected council. And I would figure out a way if it would be best suited as a government entity commission or if it would be best suited as a private entity.
Thank you. Davida. Same question. How will you work to unite city council to address equity, diversity, and access and inclusion for the city of Puyallup? And do you support the creation of a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission?
I absolutely support it. As the person who led the organization of the community to come together to ask for a commission for the city council, I completely support it. How I see in moving forward and bringing council together is why we have to sit and discuss as a council, what are absolute agreed-upon? I believe we all can agree that all citizens deserve to feel safe. They all deserve to feel included. They all deserve to feel welcomed within this community. From there, and being able to look at our absolutes, there has to be some aspects of accountability with that and understanding and what that looks like for reconciliation for a city. What does that look like in acknowledging our past and moving forward to heal our future? With that, there must be the voices of the citizens. There must be the voices of citizens who have normally and regularly have felt as if their voices are not heard, that they're not honored, and that their viewpoints and their lived experiences are not part of the discussion. So as someone who does share many of these lived experiences, I work to bring that voice, bring that aspect to the discussion, and create actionable plans of what we would do as a committee, as a council, and as a city together and engage in the community and making this commission come together and flourish in our community.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes, to answer both your questions, yes, I am in support. And I do believe it would be very straightforward to bring the city council along on this because they've recently hired a DEI consultant. So there's already a desire for this to occur. If you look on my website, I've already created a draft version of an Equity and Ethics Commission that I believe would be very beneficial for the city. So there's something that you can download and read, and it's something that, when elected, I believe needs to be implemented. I'm also in favor of having more meetings per district. I would like to see a district meeting at least once a year for every district so that people that live there can come together and share their lived experience with their representatives on the council so that they can be aware of what's affecting communities and then can take that information and strategize and figure out what needs to be done within the city. But again, I believe that that would be a pretty straightforward ask of the current city council because they did hire a consultant already. So there's already a desire. There's already a need. We just need to continue to move forward with the momentum to ensure that this continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. We'll start with Davida. Puyallup has just completed a Housing Action Plan. Do you think this Housing Action Plan is sufficient to address the needs for affordable housing in the community? Please explain. Davida?
I believe, go ahead, sorry, I believe the action plan is definitely a good start. I think it's an important aspect with this action plan that we allow the community and its citizens to continue to flush it out. I think an aspect that is missing with the action plan is going to what made me deemed in our society as those who are the most impacted by this, creating a, what I would say, a focus group to be able to sit and flush out the aspects of this action plan. I think there's positive pieces to it. I believe the hotel program has been great. I believe that we need to look at it more of a long-term piece, and how are we doing to where those, like I said, who have the greatest impact in this are part of not just the opinion but part of the decision-making. And with that, it really will call for us as council members to kind of sometimes take a step back and let those voices be amplified and let those voices and their ideas to come forth in looking at what was developed and how it is sustainable, how it will be worked in long-term, and the financial impacts overall, as well as the greatest impact to those who will be participating in this housing plan.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes, I have reviewed the Housing Action Plan, and I do believe it is a great start. I believe they're in this point right now where they are taking citizen comments on it, which is excellent. I am in favor of looking for areas where we can put in affordable housing for people, preferably near transit, because I know that sometimes people that want to be in the upzoning areas want to be able to live where they don't need a car, so having people near public transit is very important. I also, in fact, I recently wrote a blog post just about this, about how we can help with the homelessness. I believe that our hotel program was a success. It is continuing. But in order to make that long-term, we are going to have to find a way to make it a little bit more affordable. From the numbers I've looked at, we have 20 beds in Puyallup right now, and it's costing us $25,000 a year. And then we're utilizing another 10 beds at the Salvation Army in Tacoma, which is $5,000 a year. And we need to find a way to sort of bring that together to make it more affordable, possibly expand the beds in the hotel program a little bit more. We need a unit that's closer up to South Hill to house some of those individuals. I think we can get there. We have a great start. And again, I have laid out a plan that I think is, that we can implement. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
I do apologize. When you were asking the question, my signal cut out just a little bit. Would you mind?
I'll read it again. Yes. Puyallup has just completed a Housing Action Plan. Do you think it's sufficient to address the needs for affordable housing in the community? Explain.
Absolutely. We need to consider the opportunity to revitalize our downtown corridor to bring more affordable real estate to those that need it most, not just apartments. Our city real estate market is pricing our first-time homebuyers, our seniors, along with those with disabilities that are on fixed income, out of the housing market. We need to consider bringing more condo and studio units and a mixed-use building to our downtown corridor. This will allow for opportunities for natural grocery stores and healthier living, more restaurants, better walkability, and important infrastructure for those who live in the heart of downtown. These condo and studio units that I'm speaking of would be in close proximity to utilize the train to commute to and from work as well. The concept must be well-thought-out, studied, and executed with the support of the community. I believe it will not only add additional vibrancy to the downtown corridor, but it'll also bring responsible economic vitality and sustainability to the downtown communities as well.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Joe. And a lot of people complained about the traffic and congestion in downtown Puyallup. Many blame the recent economic development, rezoning, and higher density. What would you do to manage congestion, especially as density increases? Joe?
Yeah, I've definitely witnessed it myself. Before the pandemic, I was a commuter on the Sounder Train, and so I witnessed the traffic that would occur in downtown Puyallup. There's a couple of things we can do. The first thing we can do is take a look at the timing of the lights to see if we can increase traffic flow throughout the downtown core. Another thing we're going to, I want to look at is there's going to be an expansion of Shaw Road. I don't know how many people are aware, but down here where the new Safeway went in, all the way up to 23rd, that length of Shaw Road is being looked at to be expanded to help with the traffic backup that occurs during commute hours. And we need to ensure that we build that smartly. There's been a couple of proposals that's been put up that they're looking at, and I think the smartest proposal that reduces the traffic or that will help increase traffic flow the most is by having a left-turn lane in there and then lanes, one lane up and one lane down. I'm also a proponent of making sure that no more warehouses go in on the farmland that's down there by Safeway and Shaw Road because if we put warehouses down there, that is going to increase traffic a lot by all those semi-trucks entering the roadways down there. So I'm going to make sure that we put in as few warehouses as possible to help ensure that our traffic doesn't get worse.
Thank you. Dennis?
You know, I've lived in Puyallup almost my entire life, and the traffic through downtown and coming off of 167 is a lot, to say the least. Approximately 45,000 cars a day go by the section between 167 off-ramp to connect onto River Road and then also funnel through the downtown sector as well. I believe that once that 167 highway gets built out to I-5, that should reduce an immense amount of traffic through our downtown, and it'll definitely ease the stress there. Traffic lights, I agree with Joe. They need to be synced. I do know that the previous light sinker, if you will, I don't know the technical term for it, he's no longer with the city, and it's been some time since we've had the master of light sinks in the downtown section. So I, too, I think Shaw Road and the whole warehouse situation needs to be addressed. I'm for preserving farmlands, and I don't want to see any additional warehouses built down there. And I want to try to preserve as much farmland as we can. But I think the biggest thing for downtown is, once that 167 highway gets connected to I-5, we'll be able to see a tremendous amount of relief to the downtown corridor.
Thank you. Davida?
I kind of giggle because I think this is the one topic that all three of us agree on, and we can probably sit down for coffee together and have a great conversation. But I do completely agree with Joe and Dennis on, you know, the lights and looking at both Shaw Road and how that's going to expand warehouses, being very mindful and very systematic in regards to how many and what warehouses are allowed, and even looking at our housing. And as we're looking at affordable housing, also considering the traffic that that will bring and how can we ensure that we are working to create as least impact as possible with that as far as, like what Joe was saying, with being on a transit system line with that. I think in addition to what both of the candidates said is, we also have to look at the safety. As someone myself who does like to walk around downtown and in these areas, there are safety issues with that, and looking at it from an equitable aspect of that as well with those pieces, ensuring that not only with our traffic and thinking about the vehicles, but we're also thinking about the pedestrians as well with that. So I think that's an important piece, and I do agree with the others on that.
Thank you. And the next question, we'll start with Dennis. The eviction moratorium expires July 31st, and the utility moratorium ends September 30th. What should the city of Puyallup do to make sure that people can stay in their homes and have water power and sanitation? And especially want to note with regard to this question that female-headed households are much more likely to rent in Puyallup than male-headed households. Dennis?
Well, that is definitely a hot-button issue, for sure. You know, I think that from a city standpoint, they should reach out to the state for additional help in regards to making sure that their rents are able to be paid, if possible. That's a tough one, and it definitely needs to be addressed. I know that it's coming up, and it's just right around the corner. And those people need to be, that are in this predicament, definitely need to be helped in some fashion and some way. You know, a lot of the, it would be interesting to take a look at the statistics regarding those that have received stimulus checks and how this will affect once the moratorium is lifted, if they do have enough cash in the bank to be able to pay rent, so to speak. But it definitely needs to be addressed, and it's definitely an issue that needs to be figured out, for sure.
Davida?
For myself, I will say this definitely hits close to home. As someone who, for many years, 14 years, I was a single parent and understand the challenges when it comes to being able to meet the financial needs in their home, I believe that as a city, there was the CARES Act. There was quite a bit of funding that was brought into the city that recently advertising went out to apply for help. And I think it's important that this is where we do a lot of wraparound care. How are we reaching these citizens? How are we reaching the elderly community? How are we ensuring them, letting them know there is help available, regardless of if there was a stimulus check received? Because stimulus checks that were received were meeting the immediate need at that time, and it may have been groceries, or it may have been utilities or pieces. That's only a small piece. And so looking at how are we, as a city, taking the resources that were brought that are given to us through CARES Act and through federal funding and ensuring that we're getting to the communities, our BIPOC communities, our homeless communities, our elderly communities, and putting foot to the ground and saying, hey, what help do you need? We are here, and being able to have resources. I often talk about Helping Hand House is a great resource to have these nonprofits in the community help us reach these citizens who are going to need the help as this moratorium is lifting.
Thank you. Joe?
So yeah, so as a current single parent and a renter during the pandemic, I've seen where people can be stretched thin and be in a situation where they may not be able to make rent and need some assistance with utilities as well. As Davida alluded to, the city of Puyallup has come into a $12 million windfall from the CARES Act. And this is our moment where we can prevent people from becoming homeless when the moratorium is up. I wrote a recent blog post on my website exactly about this. The city needs to step up, figure out who needs help, you know, what do they need help with, and pitch in to ensure that these individuals do not go from renting and being our neighbors to being homeless and struggling to find a place to live. So yeah, when I'm elected to city council, I would absolutely look at this and figure out what we can do to ensure that people in our community stay in where they're renting right now so that we can keep them in their homes and keep the utilities turned on so that they don't suffer.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Davida. Given the intense heat and wildfires and smoke that we're experiencing each summer now, what is your plan for Puyallup to address climate change? what is your plan for Puyallup to address climate change?
My plan is versus we have to acknowledge it. We really need to sit down too often. What I felt is we've uh we look at cl- climate change and the impact that as uh on a a large national, but we're not looking at the impact within our individual city. And looking at how are we going to address that? What is this, what does this look like? I had a great conversation as I was outdoor knocking with the individual who is an environmental um justice advocate and he does a lot of work looking at our water supply and and just really being able to sit and st- stem from the expertise that's in our community. I was looking at, okay, what are our policies in our community? What are our um uh, oh lord, I just lost the word. Our permits look like for both residential and businesses and how are we helping to ensure that we're using sustainable and economical products as we're doing? And we're providing these um opportunities in the community. How are we looking at you know, our landfill, our dumps and how are we even in our renting, you know, looking at the the environmental justice within our rental properties? How are we sharing with that and really just addressing climate change on a local level in city and creating policies that are very tailored to Puyallup. And and with the mindset of honoring the local tribe, honoring their legacy and and understanding what environmental justice looks like for our city.
Thank you. Joe.
Yeah, I I distinctly remember fire wildfire season from last year. Uh, we had one that came very, very close to Puyallup. In fact, I remember packing a bag and being ready to evacuate uh with my cat at a moment's notice because the fire came so close to Puyallup. In fact, you you could see it from the downtown core and it it was pretty scary. So some of the things that I think that we need to do now is uh solar on any new buildings that we're putting up because it's cost effective. The city needs to look into moving to electric vehicles uh by a specific date. Also, I'd like us to look with the new buildings to things like green roofs and finding a way of um like putting lattices on the sides that we can have more greenery so that that'll help the environment as well. I completely agree that now is the time that we need to do this. Because it's it's not a matter of if there'll be a wi- a wildfire season coming up, it's the fact that there is one and now we have to plan for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dennis.
You know, I was thinking about this and and one of the things that I think that we need to do to help avoid additional fires in our city, uh, cuz if we have such great greenery throughout our city and our parks, we need to sweep our floors of our trails in our parks and clean them up in a way to make sure that uh trees are pruned to avoid those flames. I think that that would be one of the major steps that we could take to reduce fires in our city. Especially in the forested areas. But as far as climate change uh goes, I think we need to repair the solar panels that are broken at Pioneer Park Pavilion. We also shouldn't have to send back money that we had years ago that was dedicated for electric car chargers throughout our city. We need to get that back. I will work on requesting those funds so we can get those installed immediately through our downtown corridor. I think it'll help attract additional income to our markets, our businesses and other uh institutions and events uh that are to be held downtown. City Hall is a green building and it has such things as recirculating rainwater for the plants that are measured with a lighted down spout even. I'm not sure if anybody even knew that. And those investments need to be working and continue to be repaired. And uh we need to find the the financial resources to add additional solar and other green opportunities throughout the city, but not at the expense of raising taxes on our citizens. And we must be good stewards with the green energy that we have now by fixing what is there and not working properly.
Next question. Um, what do you believe should be the city's priorities in working with the Puyallup tribe? We'll start with Joe.
I believe the city needs to establish uh a relationship with the Puyallup tribe and ask them what what do they need? What do they want? What is the current relationship now? What do they want the relationship to look like? Because the city of Puyallup is on, you know, is on tribal land. And uh, in fact, I've reached out uh to the Puyallup tribe to get some feedback from them, asking them, you know, what is the current relationship right now? What does it look like? And uh, what would, what do you want the relationship to eventually look like? What can we do to help each other? What would be mutual beneficial for both of us? Uh, and so part of that is just having an open line of communication and a positive relationship to ensure that both are working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis.
Well, in in my personal business, I've worked with the tribe and uh through their youth and family services department and uh and so I do have a direct relationship with them uh personally through my business. And I do want to work with them and to create that that relationship that uh may not be as good as it once was. I think we need to reinvest into that relationship and have them have a seat at the table for them essentially. And to be quite frank, I think that that's very important for the vibrancy in which Puyallup is and has been over the past many, many years.
Thank you. Davida.
This is one that I believe um it's not just about the relationship, it's about honoring and understanding that we are on stolen land. And understand and understanding that we are in the home of the Puyallup tribe. So I believe that where we need to stop is we need to come at a aspect of the culture of humility and honoring their legacy, honoring their wisdom and ask them for their leadership. And take that same road and take that same mindset in all our decision making. And as we are building and bringing them into and bringing them to the table as decision makers. Part of this is is it's very um important to me um as a candidate, it's very important to me as a city leader that we are establishing that. That is why when I, before I began my campaign, I reached out and asked for tribal blessing, asked for the advice of tribal members, asked for their leadership and their wisdom in in doing this work. So I believe what we um as a community, what we do as city councils and we step back, we honor we honor and we understand that we are in their house. And we ask for their leadership and we ask for their wisdom and we also ask for their forgiveness and working to reconcile that relationship that has been broken and and build from that perspective of humbling ourselves and understand that they have a close intimate relationship with the land, with the air, with the water, and they can tell us how to do this.
Thank you. Next question. According to the city of Puyallup's um statistics, crime in Puyallup is higher than the US average. Puyallup also has a higher number of police officers per capita than the US average. Of particular concern are the higher than average number of rapes in Puyallup. What is your strategy to prevent crime, especially rape in Puyallup? We'll start with Dennis.
We need to make sure that our city and our law enforcement has the resources to continue to can uh keep our community safe and the proper training as well. We need to ensure that our Puyallup Police Department will never be defunded in any way, shape or form. In fact, their budget should possibly be increased with additional officers, in my opinion, detectives and correction officers, just because we don't even have a full staff right now. And um our parks need to remain safe even for our kids and families and as well as throughout the communities. And I think it's a shame that our crime rate uh that you mentioned uh is where it's at. And um and I think that needs to be addressed, but at the same time, we need to do more. We need to give more resources and availability to those resources and availability to the officers to do their job appropriately.
Thank you. Davida.
When we're talking about rape as the center of the crime, we're really looking at something that really breaks the ultimate trust of individuals who are the victim of rape. And looking at that goes all the way into our education system. It goes into the um the status quo and the messaging without the acceptability through our community. This is a great time when we're looking at decreasing this as coming together as a city and saying enough is enough. No more. Working with our local school districts in our sex education and how are we looking at what does consent look like? What does that mean? And be able to have that messaging coming up from young ages all the way into adulthood. We need to also have strong um laws, strong um court systems, strong policing in in those who are the perpetrators um of these rapes, who are creating these victims. And it needs to be a stance that we're taking as a community. Both understanding that this is from um female rapes to male rapes and that we are not together as a community, we're not standing for this. And ensuring that our resources are going into this from education to the legal system of that this is not acceptable here and we will not, we will not tolerate it for anyone to have to go through this in at all.
Thank you. Joe.
So I looked at some of our crime numbers from two thousand fifteen until two thousand twenty. And even though some of our numbers may be above the national average, over the course of time, our crime numbers have been decreasing. Which shows that what we've been doing in the community has been working. Now, could we get better? Absolutely. But like I said, over time, things have been getting better. And uh I I do wanna say that I do agree that with additional, uh I I believe in the additional education. Like was mentioned earlier about proper teaching about what consent is could go a long way. Uh, I'm also a huge proponent of something that's called uh community oriented policing. Uh, I'd like to get back into the practice where we have things such as block watch programs and uh where we have uh dedicated police officers per neighborhoods where these police officers get to know the people in the neighborhood. Because that has been proven to reduce crime uh when that occurs. So I think that if we try a couple of these things in conjunction, uh we can definitely get better over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Puyallup is lagging behind in vaccination. Given this puts our public health and our economy at risk, what will you do to promote everyone getting vaccinated? We'll start with Davida.
One thing that I think is important when we're looking at vaccinate, vac- vaccinations is um understanding and looking at how are we um building that trust? There is a um aspect of mistrust with vaccinations, especially in black um indigenous and people of color in that community. How are we reaching out to these communities to build that trust and wanting to um get vaccinations? Also, how are we creating opportunities for those who may not be able to get out to get their vaccinations? The city has started in an initiative program to help individuals who do come out and get their va- vaccinations to give them an in- incentive. Um, I do understand there is free rail in this, but I think part of this, when we're looking at helping people understand, we're giving them, giving them the science, we're giving them the data, we're giving them the access, we're giving them the opportunity. And we're understanding that there has, this is part of trust because we're asking them to put medicine in their body that can potentially save their lives and save the lives of others. And so one of the aspects that I have brought up to our city councils, how are we looking to focus on our BIPOC community as well as our elderly community and making vaccinations readily available and that's more accessible for them as well.
Thank you. Joe.
Yes, I wanted to commend uh the city for coming up with the program where they are giving away uh gift cards for people that are getting vaccinated. I think that is a great incentive to get some of the elected individuals uh to get vaccinated. I I am fully vaccinated myself. I think it does come down to the personal relationships and trusted individuals in the community. Uh, I remember reading a story of of when the polio vaccine was created and there was the same struggle of getting people to take it. So uh famous and well respected individuals were were brought into the community or on television shown getting the vaccine and showing people that it was safe. And we need to do something similar in in the communities. Find those trusted individuals, find those people that that uh the community respects and likes and trusts and have them share their story of what it was like to be vaccinated and why it's important. And I think through those networks and through those conversations and through those stories, I think that's what's going to work to increase the number of people getting the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis.
Well, this is a a great question and uh in fact, it it has affected me personally, just within the past twenty four hours of of this here. I've had a uh very close friend of mine who uh lives out of state and they received the vaccine and the very first dose and they haven't got their second dose yet. And um they are now in the hospital. They thought they were doing the right thing and for them. And it it's in direct correlation with the vaccine. They have reported it to VAERS and and done all the things, but she was rushed to the ER thinking that she was stroking out. And so uh to answer your question, I think it should be left up to the individual. I think it's important that we have those individual rights. When it comes to vaccinating ourselves, I'm not anti-vax. That's not what I'm saying here. I think I should reiterate, I'm not anti-vax. I think it should be left up to the individual and what's best for them. Because in hindsight, she probably wouldn't be doing it right now as she's holding on to her life in a hospital.
Thank you. This is the last question. Um, and we'll start with Joe. What are your plans to engage youth sixteen to twenty? Joe.
I like this question a lot. Uh, I have a eleven year old daughter. So you know, in the next five years, she's going to be in that age group. Uh, I'm very interested in so I have friends that work uh at the public library system that have events for teens. And uh I would like to partner with them uh cuz I think that is an excellent way to engage uh with the youth in our community to discover what's important to them. And to hear questions then that they may have. I definitely believe it is a needs to be an active outreach versus a passive outreach. And what I mean by that is we need to go to them instead of just saying, hey, I'm available, come to me if you have any questions. Cuz generally that doesn't bring people to you to to talk. You need to actively go out and engage them and say, hey, you know, my name is is Joe Colombo. This is how I'm active in the community. Uh, you know, you live here, you're involved tools. What's important to you? What do you wanna see in your community? You know, what are the things that you care about? So I would like to see a lot more of that uh outreach with our local youth. I know there's events that occurred downtown as well at the sports center and I know that there's a uh acting. My daughter's been involved in the dance theater that's uh downtown. So there's many different ways where people can engage with the youth in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, what are your plans to engage youth sixteen to twenty?
Engage youth in which way? Just in general or through the election process?
In the city.
Okay, as a general. Well, I think that um you know, uh, being in the my business line of work that I that I am in, we just need to be open and engage with each and individual person that's out there. I think that um as far as the election goes, I think that we need to bring more or uh insight to civics one oh one. I think we need to be able to educate our teens especially uh on a higher level. Maybe even going back into elementary school and teaching these students and and these kids uh at our age, at their age. All about civics one oh one. There's so many uneducated teens that are out there, they need to be better educated and I think that falls on the public school system and other school systems as well. But from a one on one, we need to um be more involved. be more involved in, in our children's lives. I think we need to be able to bring them to the center of attention and not just let them be on their cell phones and we need to get them involved in, in sports and all the things. Sports teaches so much in our, in our childhoods as we grow up as team builders and we just need to be more involved. And I think between sports and civics 101, you can't go wrong.
Thanks. Davida.
I think that the ages of 16 to 21, I think there is an aspect of we have to honor the capital that they bring to our city. I think we've seen in the last year to two years that our youth are leading the way for our communities and they are, they are teaching us, quote unquote, old folks, how it should be done and how, and how to do it. So I believe that how we engage them is first honoring the wisdom that they have, honoring the capital that they have and preparing and creating more opportunities for leadership for them. Part of my campaign, I have been able to connect with college age students, connect with teens and say, hey, what am I missing? And if it was simple as, hey, you're missing Twitter. There is an aspect of wisdom in there and, and with that aspect is how are we connecting with 16 to 21 of our BIPOC community? How are we bringing their voices into the spaces and how are we bringing their lived experience into the spaces? How are we beaming from their capital and their wisdom and saying, okay, how, help us lead the city because it's an us. And they are citizens just as much as those who are, you know, 22 to 99. So respecting, honoring and bringing their voices to the table and bringing their leadership skills and creating a partnership of mentoring. I'm creating a mentors of color program in our local school district. I create a women's of color mentoring program. So creating these aspects of partnership with our youth as well as with the legacy that's in our city.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement. We'll change the order of the opening statements and we'll start with Davida, then Joe, then Dennis. So Davida, your, your closing statement.
My closing statement is it's an honor to be here. It's an honor to be able to, these are great questions tonight. And I will say that, you know, a couple of questions were almost a little triggering because it is my lived experience. And part of being a leader in this city is to be able to keep that connection of where I want the questions to be a little triggering to me because it means that I'm bringing a voice to the table and I'm bringing a perspective to the table that I can help others understand what it's like, what it's like to be a woman. And in these situations, what is like to be a woman of color? What is like to be a single person? What is like to be someone who's lived on, you know, with a low income? And so it's my goal and my vision to come in and bring a different perspective, being a diverse perspective and be able to honor all of the aspects that your questions touch, the youth, the women, a low-income community, BIPOC community, and understanding that there is legacy and excellence in this that I would like to bring to the city council.
Thank you. Joe, your closing statement.
I want to thank you very much for hosting this forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is such a great group and you provide an excellent service to the community, especially educating everyone about civics. So I really appreciate you hosting this forum this evening and giving us an opportunity to not only talk about what our platforms are, but also to answer some of the really important questions that people in the community have. Because these are the things people care about and we need to be able to not only address those questions, but have an actionable plan to take care of some of these issues affecting Puyallup. And so I just wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to everybody here tonight. It's, it's been an honor.
Thank you. Dennis.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here and I appreciate the Latin League of Voters for having us on tonight. It was a great forum with lots of great questions. And I just look forward to having the opportunity to serve in the, in the council this fall. So people care about the questions that you asked and it's important that those, those questions get answered and action follows. And so I appreciate the time tonight and it was a great time and thank you so much.
Thank, thank you all. In ballot order, the candidates for Puyallup City Council District 2, Position 2, are Joe Colombo, Dennis King, and Davida Hagedon. You all should have received your ballot or will tomorrow. Be sure to vote early and no later than August 3rd. I would like to thank the candidates, the timekeeper Terry Baker, Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters and our community sponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, Grid City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, South End Neighborhood Council, Sumner Waller Community Association, the Tacoma Urban League, Vibrant Schools, and the YWCA of Pierce County. You can see other League of Women Voters candidate forums at our website, www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. Read your voter's pamphlet. Look at vote411.org. That's vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posed to all the candidates running for office. Read the candidates' websites and do all you can to be an educated voter. And please don't forget to vote before August 3rd. Thank you all and have a great evening.